Lift your hands in the sanctuary.
Lift your hands in the sanctuary.
Oh, lift your hands in the sanctuary.
Lift your hands in the sanctuary.
Oh, lift your hands right where you are.
Lift your hands in the sanctuary.
Lift your hands in the sanctuary.
Lift your hands in the sanctuary.
Shout to God with a voice of triumph.
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 Oh, hear your voice today.
Shout to God with a voice of triumph.
Shout to God with a voice of triumph.
Shout to God with a voice of triumph.
Oh, if this is what you're calling that you say.
Everybody pray.
Peace be brought to us.
Everybody pray.
Peace is all and all the praise of praise. Hallelujah to God.
Everybody pray.
Oh, I can't stop praying.
Happy Sabbath, everyone. Welcome back to our afternoon session. We won't be having Bible class. Today we'll be having a series on wills and trust. But before we begin that just now, we'll be having our song service. I pray that everyone will participate, whether you are online or in the sanctuary. But before we begin, let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for another holy Sabbath day of rest. We had divine, we had lunch, and now we're back energized to begin. Be with our voices now as we sing in your name, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Our first song is hymn 183, I will sing of Jesus' love. Sing of Him who first loved me. And I don't want just the praise team to be singing. Those in the sanctuary, please join us as well. I will sing of Jesus' love. Sing of Him who first loved me. For He left brights worlds above and died on Calvary. I will sing of Jesus' love. And let's praise my heart shall give. He has died that I might live. I will sing His love to me. Oh, the depths of love divine, earth or heaven, can never know how that seemed. As sarcasm mine can be made as white as snow. I will sing of Jesus' love. In endless praise my heart shall give. He has died that I might live. I will sing His love to me. Nothing good for him I've done. How could he such love be stored, Lord, I own? My heart is warm. Help me now, my love, to show. I will sing of Jesus' love. And let's praise my heart shall give. He has died that I might live. I will sing His love to me. Hymn 470, there is sunshine in my soul today. Hymn 470. There is sunshine in my soul today. More glorious and bright than glows in any earthly sky. For Jesus is my light. Oh, there is sunshine, blessed sunshine, when the peaceful, happy moments roll. When Jesus shows His smiling face, there is sunshine in my soul. There is music in my soul today. A carol to my king. And Jesus, listening, can hear the songs I cannot sing. Oh, there is sunshine, blessed sunshine, when the peaceful, happy moments roll. When Jesus shows His smiling face, there is sunshine in my soul. There is springtime in my soul today. For when the Lord is near, the heart of all peace sings in my heart. The flood of praise appears. Oh, there is sunshine, blessed sunshine, when the peaceful, happy moments roll. When Jesus shows His smiling face, there is sunshine in my soul. There is gladness in my soul today. And hope and praise and love. For blessings which He gives me now, for joys laid up above. Oh, there is sunshine, blessed sunshine, when the peaceful, happy moments roll. When Jesus shows His smiling face, there is sunshine in my soul. Hymn number 10, come Christians, join to sing. Hallelujah, amen. Come, Christians, join to sing. Hallelujah, amen. Love, praise to Christ our King. Hallelujah, amen. Let's all with hearts and voice before His throne rejoice. Praise is His gracious choice. Come, lift your hearts on high. Hallelujah, amen. Let praises fill the sky. Hallelujah, amen. He is our guide and friend. To us He'll condescend. His love shall never end. Praise yet or Christ again. Hallelujah, amen. Life shall not end thus straight. Hallelujah, amen. On heaven's blissful shore, His goodness we'll adore, singing forevermore. Amen.
One more.
Hymn number one. Praise to the Lord. Praise to the Lord, the Almighty, the King of creation. Oh, my soul, praise Him, for He is thy health and salvation. Ah, He who here, now to His temple join here. Join ye in glad adoration. Praise to the Lord, who are all things so one justly written, shielded thee under His wings, yet so gently sustaineth. Hast thou not seen how the desires have been granted in what He ordained? Praise to the Lord, who doth prosper thy work and defend thee. Surely His goodness and mercy here daily attend thee. Bother and you what the Almighty can do if with His love He befriend me.
Amen.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, young people. I was saying that is how I know the church is in good hands. Because I just asked them to organize themselves so we can start at 3:30, and they were ready to start at 3:30. I also heard one of our young ladies giving the instructions, which you did not follow. She says, "Leave the backseat for the visitors and press to the front." And I'm still going to ask you to press to the front as we begin our evening's program. My name is Merlin Bignell-Josephs. I am the director for Wills and Trust. And this evening, we are going to be having a very important discussion on how we do our wills and how we leave the trusts, our trust funds, how we can start them. I remember when my first will was when I was at 21 years old. I wrote my first will. And so sometimes we take it for granted that a will is not important. But anybody can testify who was lost, a parent or someone intestate, which is without a will. And then you will understand how difficult it is for you even to bury that person. Thank you. So as we're about to start, I'm going to once again welcome those who are in the sanctuary and welcome those who are online. Our presenters are not here as yet, but in the interest of time, we are going to start until they get here. And so we will start with the opening hymn number 633, after which Elder Jonathan Barnes will do the prayer and Sister Tristlin Davis will do the scripture reading. We'll take it in that order. Hymn number 633, please stand as you find the hymn.
Everyone?
Please stand.
Please stand.
Sing the wondrous love of Jesus. Sing His mercy and His grace. In the mansions bright and blessed, He'll prepare for us a place when we all get to heaven. What a day of rejoicing that will be when we all see Jesus. We'll sing and shout the victory. While we walk the pilgrim's path, with clubs we'll overspread the sky. But when traveling days are over, not a shadow, not a sun. When we all get to heaven, what a day of rejoicing that will be when we all see Jesus. We'll sing and shout the victory. Let us then be true and faithful, trusting serving every day. Just one glimpse of Him in glory will the joys of life repay. When we all get to heaven, what a day of rejoicing that will be when we all see Jesus. We'll sing and shout the victory.
Amen.
Onward to the praise before us. Soon His beauty will behold. Soon the pearly gates will open. We shall tread the streets of gold. When we all get to heaven, what a day of rejoicing that will be when we all see Jesus. We'll sing and shout the victory.
Amen. Amen. All right, we'll turn our Bibles to Genesis, chapter 15 and verse 1, and Abacok, chapter 2 and verse 2. That's Genesis, chapter 15 and verse 1, and Abacok, chapter 2 and verse 2. I will read in your earing Genesis, chapter 15, verse 1. "After these things, the word of the Lord came unto Abram in a vision, saying, 'Fear not, Abram, for I am thy shield and thy exceeding great reward.'" Abacok, chapter 2, verse 2. It says, "And the Lord answered me and said, 'Write the vision and make it plain upon tables, that he may run that redet.'" This is the word of the Lord.
Let me invite you to bow your heads with me while I pray. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, I want to thank you for your blessings upon us from morning until now. Thank you that you could have brought us back safely into your sanctuary to continue to praise you and worship you and adore you because you are worthy of our prayers. Lord, as we gather as a family to discuss an important topic, Lord, I pray that you will be with us. Help us that we'll all learn something there, Father, and also we all receive the blessings. Be with the presenter, dear Lord. I pray that you will take her here safely, dear Father. And I pray that as she come and present, dear Father, that your people will be richly blessed. Be with us, guide us throughout this program. God to keep us safe, God to keep our eyes on you, dear Father, because your promise never to leave us nor forsake us. Help us to put our trust and our faith in you, dear Father. Help us that we come to worship you on this holy Sabbath day of rest and that we all receive the blessing at the end of the day that we come in search of. So be with us, guide us, direct us, I pray, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Brethren, we are still waiting on our presenters. And I'm just going to use this filler. Can we identify the verses in the Bible that speak about the importance of inheritance, which will would come under? Open your Bibles man and find them. They are there. Take your cell phones and find them. Let us read them. Anybody can think of any verse, any chapter? I'm not hearing you, Sister Edmund. Yes, she needs a mic. The mic is coming, the mic is coming.
A good man leaves an inheritance for his children, children. It is found in Proverbs. I don't remember the chapter or the verse, but it is there.
Yes, thank you. I know this is in Proverbs.
Sister Elaine, you want to read something? Or the same thing? Okay.
A good person leaves an inheritance for their children's children, but a sinner's wealth is stored up for the righteous.
Okay, so we have that note. Is there any other passage? Just stick up your hand and the mic will come to you. Sister Buckley?
J 15:18. "And it came to pass, as she came unto him, that she moved him to ask of her father a field. And she lighted off her ass; and Caleb said unto her, 'What wouldst thou?' So she is asking her father for an inheritance for a part of his field.
Who is that person?
Caleb, daughter of Caleb.
The daughter of Caleb?
Yes.
Repeat the verse and the chapter.
Joshua, chapter 15, verse 18. "And it came to pass, as she came unto him, that she moved him to ask of her father a field. And she lighted off her ass; and Caleb said unto her, 'What wouldst thou?'
Okay, so it was quite clear that the daughter of Caleb knew that she was to get an inheritance. Did God give his children an inheritance?
Not a mic.
How and how? Apart from the kingdom of heaven, earthly inheritance we're talking about. Sister Buckley, please have a seat. Anybody else? Yes, Dr. White?
In Joshua, chapter 14, in Joshua, chapter 14, when Moses and Lot were separating... In Joshua, chapter 14, um, sorry, in Joshua, chapter 14, when Moses and Lot were separating, they also gave inheritance to the tribes that they had, their people. So they split the land and one went, I don't remember where.
One went on the plains.
Yeah, and one went down where the waters were.
Okay, thank you. With the children of Israel, did the different tribes got an inheritance according to, from Moses, according to the instructions from God? Where? Okay.
It says, "For Moses had given the inheritance of two tribes and a half." Okay. "For Moses had given the inheritance of two tribes and a half on the other side of Jordan, but unto the Levites he gave none inheritance among them."
Okay. The Levites didn't get an inheritance, a land inheritance, why? Any answer? Brother Walker? Oh, yes, Brother Reed?
Because the Lord himself is their inheritance. The Lord will provide for them, it is the Lord who take care of them.
How did the Lord provide for them? How did the Lord provide for the Levites? Sister, um, Trout over here?
I believe he provided for them through the tithe. They were, they were to, they were the ones who the tithe, who were to, who, who the tithe was to be given to.
Okay. Anybody want to expound on that? She's correct, you know, but anybody else want to expound on that? Yes, Sister Elaine?
Because they were doing the work of the Lord in the Lord's house, so maybe they did not have enough time to provide for themselves, so God blessed them.
It's not a maybe, brethren. The Lord said they were to get the wave offering and the first, the wave offering and all those offerings that come into the house of the Lord, they were supposed to inherit a part of it. Because they were specifically for attending to the tabernacle services. Yes?
One more point, I think they also had certain places among which the, the other eleven tribes that they were supposed to occupy as well, but they didn't have a specific inheritance for themselves and the other tribes.
Okay, yes, thank you. Are there any questions so far? Any questions, any suggestions, any more information? Did you find any more scripture that speak to the importance of inheritance? Yes, Sister Davis? Mic's coming. That's Numbers, chapter 27, verses 6 to 11, and it said, "And the Lord, and the Lord said to Moses, 'The daughters of Zelophad are right; you shall give them possession of an inheritance amongst their fathers' brothers, and transfer the inheritance of their father to them. And you shall speak to the people of Israel, saying, if a man dies and has no son, then you shall transfer his inheritance to his daughter; and if he has no daughter, you shall give his inheritance to his brothers; and if he has no brothers, then you shall give it to, his inheritance to his father's brothers; and if his father's brother has no brothers, you shall give his inheritance to the nearest kinsman of his clan, and he shall possess it. And it shall be for the people of Israel a salute and a rule, as the Lord commanded Moses." Okay, thank you. So we, do we see any, um, anything in today's present society coming from the Old Testament where wills and trust are concerned? I hear yes, I want, once you say yes, you have to tell me how it goes. In law, I'm talking. You see anything coming down in law? Yes, Sister Buckley?
If your parents die and they don't make a will, and they have a lot of children, it always bring up, pose a problem. Because this one say is mine, that one say is mine. But when the parents make a will, you know definitely, if it's twelve of you, your parents have, they give each a little part, a little part, and a little part. Because my parents died, they did not make a will, but before my mother died, she gave all of us a piece of paper to say, this part is yours, that part is yours, and that part is yours. So that's how it goes, you have to make a will, it is very important to avoid contention.
Yes, thanks. And the other part that I thought somebody would bring out is that if you do not have a will and somebody is claiming something, the brothers and sisters of the person has to sign something in law to say they are not interested, or the other siblings have to say they are not interested. And once that is done, then it is lawful the other person's inheritance. So we see where Sister Davis read, that if the man has no son, then it is the daughter's. If the daughter, if he doesn't have any children, then his brother, and it comes down until somebody gets it. But what it is, what I'm understanding from that passage is that in life, there is always inheritance. Any other scripture? Yes, Brother Walker?
Just looking at one right here, uh, this is Hebrews 9, verse 16, for where a testament.
Put on your teaching voice.
Again?
Put on your teaching voice.
Oh, not a problem, again. So this one is Hebrews 9, verse 16, it says, "For where there is a testament, there must also be of necessity the death of a testator." In other words, for a will to take effect, the person must die, right? So we know that the will only becomes effective after the person has died, and, and that's an important question. As Sister Joseph Bignose was saying, it's, it's very important that we have the will, and you're just alluding to the fact that, um, when a will, there's no will in place, it, it's much strife, much conflict, and so we are about to learn the importance of why we should have a will even before things get, you know, really bad.
Okay. Yes, Sister Trout?
Okay, I, I just wanted to give an example of, okay, alright. Um, of the, what was mentioned by, by Sister there in Numbers, where the inheritance is passed down to the next of kin in Ruth, in the book of Ruth. We see where someone was needed to redeem the inheritance that Naomi's son had left in a sense, and Boaz was asked to do so, but he did the lawful thing and went to the kinsman who was nearer to, to Naomi's son than he was, and asked if he was interested in redeeming the inheritance. And since that kinsman was not interested, as you said, it was lawfully Boaz, right, to then go ahead and redeem the inheritance that was there.
Okay, so yes, yes, go ahead.
Okay, so I just wanted to highlight too, um, in Joshua, chapter 13, um, this is for now too, that, um, when, when you're old, it's important, even if you don't want to, even if you don't want to admit that you're old, it is advised to make a will before you get to that age or during that time, because God, God himself encouraged Joshua to do so. In Joshua 13, verse 1, he said, it says, "Now Joshua was old and stricken in years, and the Lord said unto him, Thou art old and stricken in years, and there remaineth yet very much land to be possessed." And then the inheritance came about.
Okay, thank you. So we see that all over scripture, both in the Old Testament and in the New Testament, that there are scriptures to support the wills, trust, the importance of inheritance. My other question, did Jesus leave an inheritance? I'm hearing yes, I'm hearing little whispers, yes. So Sister Trout says that he promised us an inheritance. Talk loud.
Amen, "And the meek shall inherit their earth," we're told, right? The gentle, "The meek shall inherit their earth," depending on the version you're reading on, so that's our promise.
Okay, um, did Jesus leave anybody to take care of his mother?
Yes.
I'm sorry about that. What somebody was speaking about. I'd ask a question, did Jesus leave anybody to take care of his mother?
Yes.
As in the olden days, the son was, especially the eldest son was supposed to take care of their mother, who did he leave?
This.
Oh? How can you prove that? The Bible said, where?
Um, in the, when Jesus was on the cross, uh, he said, "Son, behold thy mother, mother, behold thy son." I thought that was speaking to him, leaving an instruction, saying, you know, "Take care of this lady while, as I'm passing on."
Okay, thank you, that is what I wanted to hear. And thank you for your input. I, we are going to take two more songs and I hope by that time, our guest will be here.
Hi again, everyone, we'll be turning our hymn now to 516, "All the way my Savior leads All the way my Savior leads me, what have I to ask beside? Can I doubt his tender mercy? Who through life has been my guide? Heavenly peace, divines comfort, here by faith in him to dwell. For I know what ere before me, Jesus doeth all things well. For I know what ere before me, Jesus doeth all things well. All the way my Savior leads me, shares each winding path I tread. Gives me grace for every triumph, feeds me with the living bread. Though my weary steps may falter, and my soul of thirst may be. Gushing from the rock before me, lo, a spring of joy I see. Gushing from the rock before me, lo, a spring of joy I see. All the way my Savior leads me, oh, the fullness of his love. Perfect rest to me is promised, in my Father's house above. When I wake to life immortal, wing my flight to ramps of day. This my song through endless edges, Jesus led me all the way. This my song through endless edges, Jesus led me all the way. Hymn 518, "Standing on the Promises of Christ my King." Standing on the promises of Christ my King. Through eternal edges, let his praises ring. Glory in the highest I will shout and sing. Standing on the promises of God. Standing, standing. Standing on the promises of Christ my Savior. I am standing on the promises of God. Standing on the promises that cannot fail. Bound to the holy storms of doubt and fair assail. By the living word of God I shall prevail. Standing on the promises of God. Standing, standing. Standing on the promises of Christ my Savior. I am standing on the promises of God. Standing on the promises of Christ the Lord. Bound to him eternally by love's strong cord. Overcoming daily with the Spirit's sword. Standing on the promises of God. Standing, standing. Standing on the promises of God's my Savior. I am standing on the promises of God. He hideth my soul, hymn 520. A wonderful Savior is Jesus my Lord. A wonderful Savior to me. He hideth my soul in the cleft of the rock. Where rivers of pleasure I see. He hideth my soul in the cleft of the rock. That shadows a dry thirsty land. He hideth my life in the depths of his love. And covers me there with his hand. And covers me there with his hand. A wonderful Savior is Jesus my Lord. He takeeth my burden away. He holdeth me up and I shall not be moved. He giveth me strength as my day. He hideth my soul in the cleft of the rock. That shadows a dry thirsty land. He hideth my life in the depths of his love. And covers me there with his hand. And covers me there with his- And covers me there with his hand. With numberless blessings, strange moments he crowns. And filled with his fullness divine. I sing in my rapture, oh, glory to God. For such a Redeemer as mine. He hideth my soul in the cleft of the rock. That shadows a dry thirsty land. He hideth my life in the depths of his love. And covers me there with his hand. And covers me there with his hand. When clothed in his brightness transported I rise. To meet him in clouds of the sky. His perfect salvation is wonderful love. And shout with the millions on high. He hideth my soul in the cleft of the rock. That shadows a dry thirsty land. He hideth my life in the depths of his love. And covers me there with his hand. And covers me there with his hand.
Amen.
Thank you very much, praise team. He hideth my soul. Once Jesus hides our soul in the cleft of the rock, we know we are safe and secure. Amen, church? All right, our presenters are here, you may have a seat, right there. Our presenters are here, but you know, we have to give them two minutes, five minutes, to get the rough road out of the system. So there's a question that always plague the Seventh-day Adventist Church. The question is, should we pay tithes on our gross? That is, all the money you get before all the taxes are out or on your net? What do you see? Who said gross? Put up your hand. Sister Duffus, Brother Reed, no, not Reed, that Saunders, Brother Barrett, Sister, come on. Thirty seconds, let's start with Sister, oh, let's start with Sister, um, Duffus, she put up her hand first. Remember, I say our visitors are here, so it have to be quick.
The gross is the wage that you agreed to be paid.
Yes.
At your employment.
Uh huh, so?
So you tithe this from your wages or your earnings.
Okay, moving on, Brother Saunders.
Same thing to a sister.
You are in agreement with that?
Yeah.
All right, Brother Barrett? You put up your hand, Sister?
Yeah, with the mic. Yes, the gross is what I agree with. And the first deduction come out of my pay must be my tithe. Because after that, with the net is after, when they make all those sort of deduction. So I pay it from the gross, that's what I always do.
All right, I know our presenter might touch it, so over here, whose hand was up? Sister, neighbor, Sister Gail, then Sister Wright?
Good evening, church. The tithe we taking out of our gross, whatever else we choose to do, have, whatever else we choose to do. After Christ taking out our gross, it is, it is what we choose to do. So if we choose to do what we want to do before we, 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 um, give our tithes, then we will fall in trouble.
Okay, Sister Wright? Anybody from the back bench, on my left?
Yes, it should be from the gross and when we put God first, he will fix the other things for us with the money that's left. I have proven it.
Amen. Little is much when God is in it. All right, um, is there any question, anybody opposed, they thought, yes, Sister Patterson? Um, no, you adding, Mike, Mike?
Um, what about those who are self-employed? That work like myself in the construction field and pays workmen, what do you see? Because you pay workmen what you charge the client after you have paid workman. How do you tithe, what you charge the client or what you have after you pay your workman?
They, you pay your tithe from your income. Bring the mic over to Sister Patterson, please. You pay your, your tithes from an offering from your income. It doesn't mean, um, so, in my estimation, I might be wrong. If you collect ten dollars for a job and you have four persons and you pay them a dollar each and you earn six dollars, then I think that is what you pay your tithe from. Yes, Sister Patterson?
This is a question, um, well, most persons said from your gross. Um, is that inclusive of the taxes that, that are mandatory or you exclude the taxes?
All right, what I understand gross to be is what you get at the top of the page. When you get down to the income tax and the housing trust and all of that, those, you should pay your tithes on what you get at the top of the page, not what you get at the bottom of the page. So the gross is what you get overall before the taxes are taken. Yes, Sister Duffus?
The government could actually, or whoever, the employer could actually give you everything and you would be required to come and pay taxes. The NHT, when people don't use that, they actually get the refund, it's your money. So the government could give you everything and say, "Come and pay your taxes." And we are required to pay taxes, so it's still your money.
Okay, and just one thing, whether you're paying mortgage or not, you'll get back your NHT payment. Yeah, I know.
Income tax is not yours, NHT is savings, income tax is not yours.
I am sure our presenter can clear up that point more eloquent than I can do. All right, so praise team, we are going to take number 633 again. Um, first and last stanza, just first and last, 633. After which, um, Sister Barnes will come and introduce our speaker. And right after this introduction, Dr. White will come and do that special and the next voice you hear will be our presenters.
Sing the wondrous love of Jesus. Sing his mercy and his grace. In the mansions bright and blessed, he'll prepare for us a place. When we all get to heaven, what a day of rejoicing that will be. When we all see Jesus, we will sing and shout the victory. Onward to the bride before us, soon his beauty will be whole. Soon the pearly gates will open, we shall tread the streets of gold. When we all get to heaven, what a day of rejoicing that will be. When we all see Jesus, we will sing and shout the victory.
Good evening, everyone. All right, my task this evening is to introduce to you our presenter for the afternoon. I am not able to give you all her credentials and qualifications, but I know from the presentation, you will be able to gain a lot more information. I'll just give you a summary right here. Our speaker started in the life insurance industry with Life of Jamaica, which is now Sajicor, in the 1985. By 1987, she was introduced to the business of employee benefits and pensions. Currently, she is an FSC licensed life insurance sales representative, pension consultant at Solid and General Insurance Brokers Limited, and a partner, Milestone and Lifestyle Planning Services. It is from the latter business entity that she conducts fee-for-service seminars and the training on retirement, financial and lifestyle planning for businesses. Trustee of Approved Superannuation Funds, ASF, and Approved Retirement Schemes, ARS. She is also the co-author of the book, Oops, I Forgot to Save for Retirement, and this book is available on Amazon. There's also this poster, Seven Sources of Retirement Income, available from the Milestone website. Having decided that the life insurance industry was going to be her profession, she pursued life insurance studies and professional designations to learn more about the life insurance, employee benefits and pension business and gained the designations L U T C, C L U, C H F C, which she will explain when she comes to the desk. This pursuit for knowledge continued into 2008 to study law, sorry, sorry. Knowledge continued into 2008 and she went on to study law in 2012, where she obtained an honors degree from Holborn College in the United Kingdom. Armed with professional and legal knowledge, next came the opportunity to research the Bible truths and relate it to her profession, her professional life. And yes, after much searching, the biblical link was also revealed. God's wonderful creation of a man and a woman and his commands to them and us to having dominion over the earth and be fruitful and multiply. Her many years of experience has shown that many Jamaican men and women did not take their retirement, financial and lifestyle planning seriously and that there's a huge need for education, especially in light of the fact that retirement saving, savings plans also provide a foundation for generational wealth. I present to you this evening, Sister Magdalena Cooper, the news. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. The road is bad, thank you. The road is bad, but give God thanks that we stuck with it. My sister, Sister Tanya, Ralph and myself, we stuck with it. At one point, I was thinking, should I turn back? And I said, "No, I'm going to continue." It's good to be here with you all. Um, it's been, it's been some time since I've been here, you agree? I was here some time ago, many years before the pandemic, and, um, it's good to be back with you all. I heard some discussions earlier on when I came in about NIS and NHT, especially NHT. And we're going to talk about that as well. Because I am an honest believer that Sabbath afternoons like this gives us time to talk about these things, so we can use it as well as a ministry for others, you know? Every relationship includes money, am I wrong or am I incorrect?
None of the above.
None of the above, so what is it then? It's all right, I'm not going to ask you again. All relationships include money, you have to know how it works. And that is what is causing a lot of problems in Jamaica. Deadly fight, am I wrong or am I incorrect? A lot of the poverty in, you like that, isn't it? Um, a lot of the poverty in Jamaica is not because Jamaica is a poor place, it's because, um, the financial matters are handled very poorly. Anybody wants to disagree with me? I change my tune for you, just so you don't have to laugh. Anybody wants to disagree with me? It's the poor handling of, I mean, see, I'm not Jamaican and the reason why I'm still here after coming here in 1981, because it's the richest country I've ever lived in. It's the only country I can walk in and say, "Give me a second, let me just look and see how much money there is underground." I can pick up twenty dollar, now it's turned to fifty dollar bills. In the olden days, it used to be the brown money, isn't that correct? And I have a stack of brown money at home because of how I pick it up on the road. Now I'm getting one dollar, so inflation is now a dollar, and that's the problem. We don't see that everything starts from one. When you read Genesis 1, where does it start from? Genesis 26, no. It starts from Genesis 1, doesn't it? And so you have to remember that that is the important aspect of our life. So I hope that this afternoon's presentation, you are going to be able to learn. You can ask questions at any time and we're going to go through some details. But let's pray. Father in heaven, thank you so much for bringing us safely to church and to be able to share. Thank you for your love, for your mercy. Thank you for the families that are represented here. May we all learn, your love includes us managing our finances, not only for ourselves, but all. Be with us as we discuss, Heather, whatever we say and do, will be done to your name. Praise on and glory for Christ's sake, amen. Okay, so let's see if this thing works how I think it should work. It's not working how I think it should work. So that's me, you're not seeing me, right? I don't know what has happened here, okay, let's see. Uploading pending file, um, okay, let's go to slideshow. I'm not getting slideshow, I don't know who connected this to me, but I'm not getting slideshow on my screen. All right, let's see what happens here from beginning. Oh. We mustn't let difficulties prevent us from pursuing what God has for us, you know? You know that? What the difficulties are, are there to do is to just strengthen you as you go along. It keeps, it keeps, um, dipping out, when I, see? You can come around this side, come around this side. So what we're going to talk about is really about, which I've been asked to speak to is about wills and trust and generational wealth and how you manage your own self now. How many of you in here have a generational wealth plan? Hello? Oh, he has, how old are you? How old are you? Fifteen and he has a generational wealth plan, okay. Um, anybody else? Okay, that's fine. Okay, that's fine. Yes, use that one? Oh, and it changed, okay, fine, thank you so much. And the little ones shall lead them, yes? That's why in this life, you must never say as an adult that you know everything. The little ones will always show you what you can do better, and that's why we have to work together, yes? Amen, thank you very much, sir, thank you. Alright, so let's go, go now. Is it changing? Yes. So that's me. When it comes up on the screen, yeah? You had an introduction for me. Myself and Tanya are on the CWD, the EJCCWD MC, and this is part of some of the work that we do as well, being on that CWD team. And Sister Ralph, can you please stand and show them that you are Sister Ralph for me? Thank you very much, thank you. And Sister Ralph is an attorney. So we have some, we always have some really great discussions because she's a practicing attorney, and I'm just a person who did law studies. And I'll tell you, I did my law degree at age 58, and finished at age 62. And I'm not 62 now, I'm 70. So it's never too old to learn. And you must maintain that lifelong learning attitude until Jesus returns. When you stop learning, you stop growing. In fact, they say that the brain starts to die. So, learning is very important for me, and I just enjoy it. And Tanya and myself always have these very heated arguments, but we always agree to disagree where necessary. Spirited, no, not heated, spirited. So she just corrected me, spirited. Okay, so when you're doing anything, even at church here, you need to know what the rules are. And I'm gonna tell you what the rules are for my presentation. Be respectful to other attendees. Ask questions, even silly ones. Because when you ask questions, nobody should say to you, so what kind of fufu question is that? No, it's you, if you knew better, you would say differently, isn't it? So you must be respectful to other people when they ask questions, regardless of what the question is, and if you know better. That's the purpose of having questions, so that we can learn as well, right? Listen and participate fully. And remember, you can stop the presentation at any time. I have a presentation, you have about 28 slides. If you want us to stop at a particular time, I will stop it, and that'll be fine by me. Because that's the point of learning that you wanna go to, and that's fine by me, yes? Ask your questions I said before, and I'm gonna give you some homework. I see everybody smiling, saying, yeah, I'm glad for the homework. No? Why everybody looking so serious? Homework is good, that's what the Sabbath School lesson is all about, you know? Sabbath School lesson is about homework. You have to go and study it every day so that you can participate in the Sabbath School lesson the next week. I have a song here which I thought I would play. I only hope that I can play it. If I can't play it, then, no, I need to go to the internet. But it's a beautiful song, I'll send it to Sister Barnes. It's a really beautiful song. And it has some very nice inspirational pieces on it. I, I thought I would be able to get it up, but I can't, so we're just gonna move on in the interest of time in any case. Alright, so we're gonna look at for today, the, the theme I was put up is three tips for your personal generational wealth plan. And I think these three tips are important because they help you, when you leave here today, to decide what you're gonna do. That's very, very important. So the first tip is have a vision, and we're gonna talk about that. The next tip is know the law, spiritual, physical, and Jamaican. Many times, we want to do our own law in our community based on tradition or culture. No, no, no. When you're looking at, at generational wealth and building your own personal wealth, you have to know what are the laws of Jamaica, and the Bible has a lot of it. Yeah, it's just that we don't focus a lot on it. And the last thing we're gonna look at is create a list of advisors, and that should help you tremendously. So let's look at, have a vision. The word vision appears 73 times in the Bible, did you all know that? Seventy-three times? You need to go and find those 73 times in the King James Version. By the way, I didn't see Pastor. Is Pastor here? No, he's not here now? Okay, see him next time. So the word vision appears in the Bible 73 times. Vision, the vision word, first appears in Genesis 15:1, and this is what Genesis 15:1 says: "After these things, the word of the Lord came unto Abram in a..." "vision," saying, "fear not Abram," that's before he was Abraham, his name changed, "I am thy shield and thy exceeding great reward." Vision. I see you looking kinda, what? Yeah, vision. Those of you who are married, when you get home tonight with your spouse, create your vision statement together. Heh, heh, heh. Yes, you better create a vision, because that's what's missing a lot of marriages. Am I wrong or am I incorrect? Or the women say, I'm correct. What about the men, the husbands? What are they saying? I'm wrong? Husbands? Husbands are not hearing you. Alright, we'll leave it for the next time. So, it's very, very important you have a vision of what it is you want for the future. You'll find that most people, like, I don't know what it was about Jamaica in the 1980s, I just said, we gotta go to Jamaica. And here I am. I just spoke about it, gotta go to Jamaica. And look at it. What, some 41 years later, I'm here? Vision is very... I've left many times, but still come back to the rock because every time I come back to Jamaica in the flight, when I used to go up and down, I'd fly a lot, I used to love to hear Jamaicans clap when the, when the plane is landing. Have you all ever experienced that? That, that for me was, yes, I'm back on the rock. That was the, that was the indication I was back here. "And the Lord answered me and said, write the vision and make it plain." You hear what it says? It says, write the vision, that's why couples need to write the vision. "Make it plain upon tables, that he may run that redetheth." So when you don't have your vision statement written on, I remember, I was looking back, last week, in preparation for it, looking back at a vision I did in 2012, and I'm amazed that the vision has really turned into reality. So it's very important that when you're able to write these things down, what you want, what you want to see happen. And this last text that I just read comes out of Habakkuk 2:2. Go and read it, it really makes a lot of difference. "Have a vision for your current and future lifestyle, which is based on the principle of love relationships, spiritual and physical." And the reason why I'm smiling is because Tanya and myself were talking about this. One of the things we have not done very well in the church, and you all can throw me out if you want, is that we haven't practiced and taught love principles very well. We need to do that. We cannot be looking towards eternal life, where it's going to be all about love. Am I wrong or am I incorrect? It's all about love, so if you're not practicing love down here, how are you gonna get to eternal life? Yeah? So you need to make your vision statement about love as well, having it including what, what you're gonna do to carry out love. And based on the principle of love relationships, spiritual and physical, create a financial budget for your pay and share with spouse and your children. And if you look at Genesis 1:26, it says, "be fruitful and multiply." That's what God said to Adam and Eve. And Genesis 2:18, I don't remember what that says. But both of them are looking at vision and how to be able to get that vision going for your current and future lifestyle. So, be fruitful and multiply, wasn't gonna happen that same day. It's talking about the future, right? It's talking about the future and how it's gonna, and how you're gonna go about doing it. You, you need to have a vision of how you're going to manage your investments to build wealth. I don't know why is it that we see wealth as a bad word, when in fact, the Bible speaks a lot about it. There's nothing wrong with a couple building wealth. What is wrong is if you're build, if you have the wealth, and the wealth become your God. No, no, no. The Bible says that you love God first, not the wealth. Yeah? And that's why it says the love of money. But you gotta have these things as your fundamental, because that's what needs to carry on from generation to generation. Personal, spouse, for how to manage your investments to build wealth, you share with your spouse, you have a fear self, and you have it, you share with your children. And the reason why I'm smiling is that I do a lot of retirement pension work in my business. And it's amazing, I'm always amazed. When I go, I'm gonna start with the ladies first, if the men don't mind. I go to the ladies. Can you fill out this section here on the beneficiary? And they'll put all the children as beneficiary. I say, but when I look at this part of your form, it says you're married. Oh, oh, yes, so what you're saying, miss? What are you saying, miss? I said, you must put your husband first and only. You're laughing at me, right? Because you know that's true. Yeah? You go to the men. When I'm doing enrollments, and I say to them, fill out the form, and they fill it out. Very few men, I know you're waiting to hear what I'm going to say, right? I could see, you know, he was sitting down like this, you know? And then all of a sudden, he turned like this, you know? Because he wants to hear what I'm gonna say. Very few men put their children down. Most of them, 99.99%, they put their wives down first. They don't even put the children, they put the wife down. Very, very rare, I have to say to the men that I enroll, you need to put your wife down and the children, or if you want the children. I usually do not rec, I usually do not recommend that in the initial stages, they put down the spouse as the benefi... Yes, yes. The spouse comes first. Yes? No, is that the children first? It's the spouse. Why is that? Why is that so in those plans? Do you all know why? You all don't know why? Because if death occurs, it is the spouse who needs the income to continue life, pay your bills after you've died, and continue. And they can't continue without an income. So it's not the children, the children cannot do anything with the money, because guess what? If the children are minors, what happens? They cannot get access to the money directly because the law says that they're not age 18 and over. So you've got to put down the spouse first. And only, know that children are after you've built up, and you have enough assets in there, then you can put on children. After you know if you have enough funds in there to give your spouse a good guaranteed lifetime income. So we don't reach to wills yet, you know? Because if you're not planning and having that vision from before, then the will makes no sense. Because you can't put the children in them as a beneficiary only in the will, because it not work, unless you're a widower, widower, yes? So you gotta know that first. And then, you plan for the succeeding generations. So there's usually a clause in the will, and everybody would have got a handout, Sister Barnes, everybody got a handout? They don't get it yet? You have it to give out. Okay, alright, so you'll give it, make sure each family gets one. Yes, you're gonna email, but I, I'll show them in a while what it looks like, yes? I'll show them in a while what it looks like. Okay, have a vision, continue, know the percentage of your... So you were talking about this when I was, when I just came in. Know the percentage of your gross pay that will be allocated for tithes and offerings. It's not only tithes. Tithes and offerings, why? Why tithes and offerings? Why, why tithes and offerings? Pardon me? Yes.
Equal to the tithe or less than the tithe?
Okay, then.
But we're specifically told in scripture that we are to give one-tenth of our income, our earnings, as tithes.
Did you know that, I think it's Joseph, was actually told what the offering he should do as well? Yes. And they are both based on the principle of 10% tithe, 10% offering. My dear, the free will is 10% of your gross pay as offering. It is free will, because you can decide not to do it after you've done the tithe. But what has happened is, we only talk about the tithe, and we don't put the tithe and the offering together, because the offering is needed to maintain the building, to maintain the church. And a lot of churches were in problems when COVID hit, why? Why? A lot of people won't come into church, and what else? Yes? I will, I will send it to you. Tell Mrs. Barnes, and I'll send it to you. I didn't put it in the presentation, but I will send it to you. I thought it was well-known, but it's clear that it's not well-known. But there is a reference there with offering with Joseph, yeah? And that's why when, when there was a famine in the land, his family... Right. Repeat, where's the mic?
When they stored up one-tenth of the grain for seven years.
That's what it is. But she needs to know exactly where in the Bible it is, and I just don't remember. I think it is in Genesis. I don't remember exactly where it is, but that is basically what it is. But what happened is, we are only, we are only taught the aspect of, of tithe. The church needs both. By the way, nobody from the church has told me to come and tell you this, and I'm telling you from what my own experience is. I can tell you, as a 70-year-old, many months, when I look at my gross pay, I say, "Lord, how am I gonna do this 10% tithe and 10% offering?" But I am convinced that what, that's what I must do. And guess what? People, even Tanya will call and say, if you want some mangoes. I said, fine, thank you very much. Somebody will pass and give me what, exactly what I need. But you see, when you're doing the tithe and the offering, it really requires a lot of faith. It requires faith to know that you serve a loving God, and that He's not going to allow you to go without. If you, that, that, it's the money part that tests all of us every day. Don't worry, I wasn't always either, it's only a few years ago I learned this, and I'm 70. Alright, so everybody has their own learning curve. But it, it requires faith to take that 20% out of your gross pay. Put it in the envelope and write it up. 10% tithe, 10% offering, and you know that that 10% is based on your gross pay, not in it, not a free will little thing down the bottom there. So, oh, let me just get a law this, and then next day expecting blessings. What kind of thing is that? Can't work. Well, it works, but you don't get yes. The mic is coming to you.
I've always wondered why Malachi 3, verse 8, "Will a man rob God? Yet he hath robbed me." But he say, "Wherein have we robbed thee?" And then it say, "in tithes and offerings."
Right.
So I was always wondering, if offering is free will, how can you really rob God in offering? And I've spent all my life seeing my mother returning 10% offering, and I'm wondering why she has always done that. But I guess maybe she have the same information, but all her working years, it was always 10% for offering as well.
Yes, thank you, thank for sharing that. And this is why we need to have these sessions, so we can hear what our ancestors were also doing, but we never took note of it. And I'm glad that you took note of it. Very, very important, very, very important. Thank you for that, thank you so much. So, when you understand the 10% tithe, 10% offering, and then you come down after that, 10% savings, you can write it down, because I don't know, I don't think I have it in the presentation. Then you come down after that, 10% savings, 20% investments, and then 50% personal spending. How much is that? Add up the percentages, 10, how much? How much? 10% tithe, 10% offering, 10% savings, 20% investments, 40%, no, 20% investments, 50% personal spending. How much is that? How much is that? How much? No. What did you say? Say it loud for me.
One hundred percent.
Thank you. And that has been the problem for many of us. We have never been able to allocate our gross income one hundred percent. Why are you all looking at me like that? Eh?
No, I am saying you are presenting, so we are using the sense of, um, the sense of sight and hearing so that we can fully comprehend what you're saying.
Okay, so now you've comprehended what I've said. Did you write down what I just said about how to allocate your, your pay? Okay, you've heard, and you can retain it. You don't need to write it down. Alright. Sister Barnes, make sure you write it down for them and can share it again. The issue you have is that a lot of the poverty and, and financial problems we have as well is that when a couple is getting married, we don't share this kind of information with them. Love and money goes together. Yeah? Love and money goes together. You can't have love without the money. And a lot of people have suffered in, in relationships because the love is there, but no money. And then you hear them say, give more money. Why are you smiling at me like that? What, it is true. So you should, we should be teaching our young people these principles that when they get into the stage of dating and getting married, they know how to put love and money together. You can't have the love without the money. It not work. Hold on.
So they will know how to invest love and invest money.
Very well said, perfectly well said. And so that is why the ten percent savings include, yes, go ahead.
Could you please break down for me how you, um, you allocate a hundred percent of what you have not received? Because you said a hundred percent of your gross and you don't get that. How do you allocate that?
Oh, okay, let me help you with that. Ten percent, ten percent, ten percent tithe, ten percent offering, that's clear, yes? Ten percent savings, very good question. Ten percent savings is NIS first. NIS, what's a contribution to NIS? I think it's now three percent, isn't it? Three, three point two five, I think it is, yes? I'm too old now, I can't contribute to NIS anymore, so I don't know what it is. Um, so it's three point two five, three point two five from ten is how much? Six point seven five, right? So you take the other six point seven five and you invest it somewhere. It's because NIS is a must. When does NIS start? When do you start to contribute to NIS? No. When you start, no. When do you start to contribute to NIS? No. That's what the law says. The law, who said it? Okay, let me let you shout it out. Let me let you shout it out.
Age eighteen.
Age eighteen, because that's what the law says. That's what the law of Jamaica says, not me. That's what the law says. Whether you're working or not, you're supposed to contribute to NIS from age eighteen. Pardon me?
If you're not working, oh, you're gonna contribute to NIS.
Because most people would get pocket money or their parents would have the money, that they would use it to do it. Why do I say that? Why do I say that? Because how many years did it take the children of Israel to go from Egypt to Canaan? Forty years, yes? In these plans, you have to contribute to them for forty years in order to get maximum benefit. Did you know that? It's a forty-year journey in order to get maximum benefit. A lot of people, I'm coming to you, I see you. A, a lot of people are, are saying that the NIS is not worth it because they were not taught that the same journey of forty years that the children of Israel took is the same journey you have to take in both the NIS and the NHT, yes?
I am not sure if you're understanding what I asked. The, the, the discussion you're having is centered around your gross salary or your gross pay, that is before taxes taken out. So I'm asking you to break down for me, how do I pay ten, ten, twenty, um, the other breakdown that took it up to a hundred percent of my gross, which I do not get? How do I spend fifty percent of what I do not get? How do I save ten percent? Because I get a net salary at the end of the month after taxes and so on is taken out. I understand clearly about paying the tithe, the ten percent of your gross. Now, after you pay the ten percent of your gross, you are getting a net income, what you take home. So I cannot do the calculation of that one hundred percent of the gross. It means that I'm going to always be in a deficit.
No, you're not gonna be always, but, but you see, when I, when you ask me that question as well, it means also that probably at church here or in the workplace, they didn't discuss with you how your pay slip is designed. Not everybody in Jamaica pays taxes. Yes? So you have what is called a gross pay, less... What's after gross pay? What comes out after gross pay? What deduction? NIS comes out next. No, not NHT yet. No, 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 not yet, not yet. It's gross pay, less NIS, less if you are a contributor to super pension fund or retirement scheme, equal gross tax, taxable pay. Then if that amount is more than the one point five, then you pay twenty-five percent tax on the excess over one point five. Then you pay NIS. Because NIS is known as a tax-free plan. NIS, no, no, NIS is known as a tax deductible and tax deferred plan. And NHT is known as a tax-free plan. So when you understand how your pay slip is designed and when you get the net pay, then you apply the ten percent, ten, 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 twenty and fifty. Because that will then show you what's already taken out of your pay and how to manage the rest of it. I can talk with you afterwards. I see you're still not quite following me, but it's not a... Not only, but I'll talk with both of you after. You have to understand how the pay slip is designed based on Jamaican law. And when you understand that, then you apply the ten, 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 twenty, and then fifty. Once, if you don't understand that, then I can see that will be a problem. You're gonna say something? You're gonna say something? No, okay. So the, the NHT is also a plan that pays a benefit in the event of disability, old age and death. The issue you have with NHT is that people keep taking the seven-year refunds. And when you take the seven-year refunds, then when old age in particular and death occurs, you have less savings in there. So for instance, I have clients who have been getting five, ten, fifteen million at age sixty-five. But most of the people don't get that because they don't leave it in there to grow until age sixty-five. So when you understand the rules, just like with us, we don't keep the Sabbath, I'm coming. We don't keep the Sabbath because it's a rule. We keep the Sabbath because it's the right thing to do because we have a love relationship with God. Yes, Tanya?
Um, Sister Magda, I think I understand the point or the question that she's asking. And I think you should deal with it now because it is something I think everybody needs to hear.
Yes.
So you can talk to them after one-on-one, but I think what she's asking. So for example, when I get my pay as gross, everybody get them pay as gross. And what, the, the, the principle...
As net.
Well, you see the gross and then you get the net. Fine, good. The principle that you have, you have explained is that the tithe must be paid on the gross and the other percentages must be paid on the gross. Am I correct? Is that what you have?
Yes, all of it will add up to the gross.
And, and the question is, when I, so I get five thousand dollars as gross. And by the time them take out all of the stat deductions and income tax, all I carry home is three thousand dollars for argument's sake. But you're expected to pay the tithe on the five thousand dollars. So ten percent on the five thousand, for, for, um, for tithe, ten percent offering on the five thousand, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. How does one pay the ten percent on something that you don't get? Because what you're getting is three and not five. And I think, can, can, can I, can I just complete it?
Sure.
I think what, the answer to it is, it is about, in terms of tithe, let me start there. Because the other deductions, other ten percent, that is, I think, a, a personal issue. It is about faith. Because you're not carrying one five thousand dollars, you're carrying one three. I think you have a biblical response as well as to why it should be on gross and not net. So that, that's, that's the, the question I think that the persons are asking. How must you pay something on, or take a percentage out of something that you're not getting? So you're paying it on five, but you're actually getting three. Is that what you're asking now?
Not getting that amount.
Yes, so, so that is why I said to you, if you, if, let's take the five thousand dollars. Ten percent of five thousand dollars is how much? Five hundred dollars. Ten percent of, so that's a tithe. The next part of it is offering. So that's what, twenty percent, yes? Yes? So that's a thousand dollars. How much did you get into your hand? So you have a thousand dollars out of that three thousand that you're going to pay as your tithes and offerings. Because, because in the rest of the money that you're getting as your income, NIS is already taken out as a savings. NHT is already taken out as an investment. So you now have the, yes, you now have two thousand dollars left, which is the fifth, which is a little bit less than the fifty percent of the five thousand dollars to be able to manage on. Now, that is where it requires faith and trust in God. Now me? Don't come to me and tell me, God, I'll give you what you want. You have to go ask God. Show me now, how, ask the Holy Spirit to guide me to show me, how can I do something else? When I went to study my law degree, you know why I went and studied it? It cost me a whole heap of money. You know why I studied it? So that I would have a better professional standing and can earn more. Sometimes we get comfortable in the state that we are in and we don't want to get up and do something else. There is nothing in this life for which you will not have to have a sacrifice to get to where you wanna go. What's the greatest sacrifice we've ever had? Jesus dying on the cross for us? What, what did he say when he got there? He didn't want to, he said, let this cup pass, eh? But he did it, and look at what we have, salvation today. So you're gonna find that when you get into that situation, it is better if you sit with, um, a financial advisor to help to guide you through. The other thing is, that what has also happened, and I'm not saying that this is the case here at all, is that when people get an inheritance, I went through the same thing, it is usually not spent properly. So instead of you having in, income from your inheritance and your work, you end up with only your work. So there are lots of little information I think we need to share, we need to learn from. Because at the end of the day, we are giving God the glory, yes?
Um, I got the, the sheet with the statutory deductions from NIS.
Yes.
And when I actually looked at them, all of them, the total is less than ten percent.
Between the NIS and the NHT?
And the education tax. The composite tax, it's less than ten percent.
Yes.
So then I realized that the tithe is actually more than what the government is taking, um, by statutory deductions.
Alright.
So you are saying that for investments, apart from the education tax, you know, like heart, the employer is required to pay that. So the NHT and the NIS, those are actually part of the investments that you referred to. So if you are saying twenty percent investment, you would subtract the percentage of the NIS and so from that and what is left, then you know that it wouldn't be the full twenty percent. You would say maybe fifteen or fourteen percent. So that's what you're saying, it's a part of the investment.
Yes, 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 yes. You remember that the sum of the parts are always greater than the whole. And you have to know how to compartmentalize your pay. Because if you're not doing that and if the husband and wife are not doing that, it's going to cause problems in the relationship, yeah? But it really requires faith to really do that ten percent tithe, ten percent offering. Was there another hand up? Yes? And thank you, Sister Tanya, for that, for that explanation. Anybody else? No, okay, can I continue? Alright, um, this approach helps to build your personal wealth, which will be your assets to be available in your estate for your, for yourself and your succeeding generations and for any charter we request. If we, and I put in a charter we request because if you look at all of the churches, almost all the churches in Jamaica, it's because somebody in their estate had land or whatever and they left it for the church. Yes? You all don't know anything about that? I think there's a church coming in here from, on St. Thomas, somewhere there, which is based on that? Where the person left the land and left the church because the gospel has to be preached. One way or the other, the gospel has to be read, be preached. So you can decide how you're gonna do that when you're doing your, um, your, your will or your trust. Have a vision, love relationships, spiritual, physical. Man shall not live by bread alone, but by every word which proceeds from the mouth of God. Deuteronomy eight-three, and we know that Jesus repeated it as well when he was being tempted by the enemy. Financial, real estate, life insurance, NHT refunds, cash will, cash will provide, which will provide capital for an income and the opportunity as a foundation to build wealth. We sometimes forget that. Your family vision should be based on the principle of God first, spouse next, and equita- an equitable share for children. Another thing that happens in our society is that, oh, my son, him handsome, you see? May I leave everything for him because he is so brilliant? It went to use divinity and him get him degree. And then the old, the other six children mean no for sure that he will share up what I leave behind for the next six children. You see, after the parents, them then, the children and then the other six children, now even see a dime. So that is why you have to have that principle of equity. It's not about the son that is so handsome and got so much degrees and so. It's about how do you share for all the children. And I think I made a comment as well that if you have children who are disabled, you set up a trust for them to ensure they will be paid as well. I think I have it here. And for, and for, for an income and opportunity as a foundation to build additional wealth. I have it somewhere else in the, in the presentation where it talks about if you have children who are disabled, you look after them by setting up a trust. A quote, a good man leave it an inheritance. A good man, a good married couple, a good individual, good woman, leave it an inheritance to his children's children. Proverbs three twenty-two first part. Inheritance appears two hundred and three times in the Bible. Inheritance! We should be not, we shouldn't be lacking in knowledge on inheritance because it appears in the Bible two hundred and three times. Quote, make your vision so clear that your fears become irrelevant. A lot of people don't make a will because boy, if they make a will tonight, they're dead tomorrow. It doesn't, it doesn't go like that. You had your hand up earlier on. Did you still wanna say something? Yes, the gentleman, yes. The one with the mask on, yes, you? Didn't you have, yes, did you, no, you didn't, okay. Just checking to make sure, yeah? Alright. Okay. Um, the Bible text, the word vision appears in the Bible seventy-three times. Choose your vision text to guide you. The next part is know the law. I think I'll stop after know the law because of the time as well. Let's go quickly into know the law. This is where Tanya will help me if I'm going wrong. Any question, any more questions on the first part? Because here though, everybody was being excited by the first part about having a vision. No other questions, right? Know the law for building spiritual, personal and generational wealth. So for instance, you have your Bible. A lot of us choose this, but we never look at this. What is this? Pardon me? It's a, it's a folder that has Jamaica's laws in it. Not all of it, but Jamaica's laws. It's very important even for the investment, wills and trusts department to have some of these laws at church bound like this, that you could keep it so people can go and read it. If you don't have it there to read, then people won't know. That's why I know so much about NIS and NHT because when I first started doing retirement planning, people thought I was crazy because everybody knows about retirement planning. And I started asking questions and people didn't know. They just said, well, let's start when I get my first job. I said, so. You get your first job at age fifty, so what happens? You don't have anything, yeah? So you gotta know when it starts. I'm gonna leave that for the time being. You're gonna know the rules and the law. If your wealth is, is also in a... If your wealth is also in another country, there are a lot of people like myself who've lived in other countries and now live in Jamaica. You've got to know what is the wealth you have laid up there in that country, especially when it comes to pension benefits and how you can claim it right here in Jamaica. I do it right now. If anybody wants help with that, you can let me know. Put your income and pay your income and property taxes, complete an annual income tax returns. We've just finished annual tax returns. It's important to do it because if you don't do it, then when death occurs, the government is going to take the tax from your estate. Yeah? So you might as well know how to do that as well. It's not hard, it just means that you've got to know what to do. Know the law. Important Bible scripture passages for building your spiritual life with God's law of love relationships, which build wealth, personal, family, and an inheritance for your succeeding generations. Genesis 1, "God and his team at creation" "God and his team at creation created mankind with love." That's really what that should say. Deuteronomy 6:46, Matthew 20:35 to 40 are my favorite texts because it speaks about loving the Lord your God with all of your heart, not half, all of your heart, and with all of your soul, and with all of your mind. And that's why when you're looking at the budget guide I was talking about earlier on 10% tide and so on, it seems difficult. But that is where now you have to get the Holy Spirit to guide you, or else it's not going to work. Yeah? 1 Chronicles, no, 2 Chronicles 9 talks about Solomon's wisdom and wealth. Proverbs 31, I spoke about that. "A good man leave it an inheritance to his children's children." And Matthew 13, 3 to 9, the sower and the seed. So the Bible has everything in it. It's just that we don't pay attention to it. Keep in mind that you are on an earthly life journey to eternal life. I don't know if you all had plenty deaths here in St. Thomas here in Morant Bay following the pandemic, but there were lots of deaths in.
The state benefits, NIS and NHT, you can go online and actually look at these. The Trustees Act, the Wills Act, and so on. So if you know what these legislations say, then you can then cross-reference it with the Bible, and you'll find that you really will see that almost every, I was amazed when I studied law, how much of the Bible is in that training. So it is well done, and if you know how to cross-reference it too, you will see that it works. If you are employed in the following sectors, know where to allocate. Miss, the lady with the, who's answering the questions. If you are employed in the following sectors, know where to allocate the legislation, where to locate the legislation and plan documents which govern your employment-related approval, retirement, savings plans. What happens in Jamaica is that most professionals call these plans pension plans. You have to be, if you come to me, you can't say to me, "Magda, I'm in a, or Sister Magda, I'm in a pension plan." I don't listen to you. Because you have to tell me what is the plan all about, what's the name of it? Because every plan has its own rules and own laws that govern it. So you have to know how it works. If you're in the public sector versus the teaching sector versus the security forces sector versus the private sector, and then recently, the tourism sector also have their own law for retirement savings. Know the law, know Jamaica legal documents which will preserve your personal wealth for generational wealth as an inheritance. And this is where now, what I'd ask to speak about as well, a valid will. You notice what I've written there? A valid will. So even though I gave some handouts, which have a will form at the back. There's a will form at the back. What I'm saying is that that will form is just to give you a guide as to what a will form looks like. But what I am equally saying is that, you have the form? Okay. This is what a will form looks like. Thank you. This is what a will form looks like. And I like this one because this is from the ministry, right? This is the government. So you don't buy a will form in the shops. You get one like this, which is printed by the Administrator General's office. This is the one that you should use. So that is why, even though I have this document which I've given out, this is to provide you with a guide as to the information you need when you're going to see Tanya, Sister Tanya, as an attorney. You can't just go to Sister Tanya and say, "Ma'am, I hear you're an attorney, you can write my will for me." No! If you don't have the information, can you imagine us trying to navigate life today without the Bible? We couldn't make it. So you have to be able to know where to get the information from and who to go to to be able to know if your will is valid. Because sometimes the law goes for amendment, and things may change, and you will write down things in there, and next thing you know, that your will is partially valid. There's a story of a family, this couple in, and if you're married, you should also ask about jointless, it's called jointless. Jointless, I think it's called, you can speak to your attorney about that. But this couple who is married, living in one of the country parts of Jamaica, and both of them, the wife didn't like her family. They had business, and both of them were in an accident with each other, and they both died. Do you know if a husband and wife is in an accident together and death occurs? Do you know what's the law that is applied? Nobody knows. Tanya must answer the question. You don't know what's the law that's applied? The law says that the older person dies first. The older person in the couple, husband and wife, the older person dies first. In this particular case, the man was older, so he was presumed dead first, and all of his estate went to the wife. And the wife didn't like her family. Guess who gets her estate eventually? The family that she didn't like. So you have to know how the law works. That is why, if you notice on the screen, it says a valid will and a testamentary trust. What a will does, can you come watch that again? So what a will does, so she's 90th century. So what a will does is that, a will does this. I died last night. Okay, I died last night, and I'll need to find my granddaughter to the other family. And I left her, I came to the world. She had some siblings, but I only left her. So before, see that she's named in the will, everything goes to her. All right? That's what a will does. I came back alive. And I have now a testamentary trust. And what a testamentary trust does is that it's as the trustees that you've named in the will should be to take care of the estate and give Annalise an income or benefit until she dies. So when you're going to see an attorney, you need to know what is your vision. Do I want to give her everything and let her spend it however she wants? Or do I want to have trustees? Because you have trustees, then they can be sued if they don't manage their estate properly. Or they can sue her if she don't manage her estate. But if I have a testamentary, if I have a will, there's nobody to sue. You can't sue Annalise. Yes, and that's why you need to know the difference. Thank you very much for the question. Thank you. So you need to know the difference between a will and a testamentary trust. Another thing is that if you're looking at a testamentary trust, you can, I'm coming, Mike, you can also have Administrator General as your trustee. Why do I say that? Because they're basically set up in law, and the story is told by them of this man who was very concerned about his daughter. And the daughter, that she had sons, he was concerned about his daughter, he said about trust. And the Administrator General was looking after the trust. And she lived over 100 years, and the people from Administrator General were sending a cheque every month while she lived in Jamaica. And when she went to the UK, they kept sending it on after she passed. The balance of the estates went to her. So there's a need for us to understand these differences. I'm not saying, "Oh, will is bad." I'm just saying you need to know what is your vision, and therefore you put the instrument that you want to fulfill that vision. Yes? Yes? What is?
What if I write a will for my family only? Me and my wife together, I write a will for my family only, and I end up dead. And my family decides, they want something out of the will, out of it.
And that's the problem you have. When you don't set up a trust, then you get this thing, "Well, you know Papa, they tell me same, he was going to get that peace there," so on. And that is why families, in fact, one of the things I'm hoping for one day is that in East Jamaica Conference, we'll have a family retreat which talks about these things only. So people can understand it. And that's where you get a deadly fight. Because it's a will that was set, not a trust. It was a will, and so the family said, "Hmm, so you give everything, you'll see an attorney gets out of you." And that's when the cross starts. So understanding which one to use as a testamentary trust is important. And that's why in the church, in the church, they say, yes, thank you. In the church, you know, once a guy ran into the church, the church says that you do not leave for the church until you've left something for the family. Because the church doesn't want to be caught up in a court case about, you know, this deceased person leave money for them, and then they leave nothing for them. You don't want that. So that's why you need to go to an attorney to get the will done. Yes? Mike coming up behind you. There it is behind you. Go ahead, yes.
So what are you saying? It is best to write a trust will?
A testamentary trust.
Okay.
Testamentary trust, that's what it is.
Instead of just writing a will?
Instead of writing, a straight will. Yes, that's my recommendation. But again, it depends on who you have for your generational wealth plan that you and the attorney will sit and discuss. I'm just giving you overview. But you, and that's why I said, you know, I'm giving you information to guide you, but I'm not saying that's what you must do. It's based on the facts that you prepare in this document, which you're going to get a copy of, and take it to your attorney that then decides which one is better for you to do. Yes?
If my mother going to write a will for like me and my grandmother, for my granddaughter?
Yes.
Is it that she has to go to a JP for them to fill it out? Or how it's supposed to go?
Give it to Tanya, let her answer for me. Yes? All right. So the question that she has asked is related to the issue of what are the requirements for making a valid will? Sister Magda? I, you are. Go ahead. Okay. So she has asked, notice what she said. She said, "If our mother is going to make a will for me, you and you, your daughter." When you say that, if I'm understanding, I think what you mean is your mother is the person who's going to write the will, but she's going to leave something in it for you and your daughter. So if I own property, whatever it is that I own, and I want to leave it to somebody, whether whoever you want to give it to. And that's one of the benefits of a will. A will allows you to decide how you want your property to be distributed. You get that opportunity. If you don't make a will and you die, then the law is going to tell you how your property must be distributed. It will tell you who must get what. And so the example that Sister Magda used about the lady not liking her family. If she died and didn't leave a will, the law will tell her that, guess what? This percent must go to your husband. This percent must go to your children, and so on and so forth, depending on who it is that is in your family. So remember, that's an advantage of making a will. You get to tell the executor, whoever, where you want your property to go. Your mother writing the will, when she writes it, it is her wish. So the person writing the will, them have a pretty name. If it's a man, it's a testator. If it's a woman, it's a testatrix. Nobody should tell them really what must go in there. It is something that they must sit and consider. It's a prayerful decision, something that you must sit and, you know, give thought to. And Sister Magda has said, you must have a vision, you must have a plan. Write it down. So that when you go to, if you choose to use an attorney, you know what you want to do, and the attorney will guide you. When the will is made, it must be signed by the person who is making it, our mother, and it must be signed by her mother in the presence of two witnesses. So if the mother feel that she want, Sister Magda and Pastor to be a witness, or her two witnesses, then she must sign it in their presence. They must be present at the same time. So it can't be that our mother going to sign the will today with Sister Magda alone and tomorrow with Pastor. It don't work like that.
Have to do it in the presence of both of them.
It will make the will not good. It will invalidate it. So the two of them must come today, stand up in there and seeing Sister Magda signing the document. Now, the argument is, I must, some witnesses will say, "I want to see what is in the will." It's not necessary. What them witnessing is the signature.
Signature.
And to know that it's Magda that was the person that really signed it and not Tanya forging Magda's signature. You get me? If you, as the person making the will, feel that, all right, you want the witness to read it, no problem. But it is not a necessity. Now, I want you to understand that you must follow certain requirements in order for the will to be good. If you don't follow the requirements, it can make the will invalid, not good. I'll tell you a quick story and then I'll hand back what to Sister Magda. Many years ago, I did a presentation, and there was this young man who was a part of the presentation, you know, probably early twenties. And while I was going through the necessary information, he said, "Miss, you know, I make a will." And I was happy, my heart smiled, because as you can understand, one, he's male, and you know what about all males, they are marginalized, and usually males don't take certain things seriously. At the end, after I went through all the information, he came to me and he said, "Miss, you know, I have a question." He said, "When he wrote the will, when he make it, is him alone sign it?" He did not sign it in the presence of.
Two witnesses.
Two persons. So here was this young man who was happy that he had made a will, but that will, if he had died, would not have been good.
Yes.
Because it was not witnessed by two persons. And so the point that Sister Magda made about going to an attorney, I don't disagree with her, but here is how I would, I would add a little tweak to it. There's nothing in the law that a will must be made by an attorney. You can choose to make it by yourself. However, if you are not making it from an informed point of view, so you don't know what the law say, and you're going to do what you feel like you want to do, then you're going to have a problem. So when you find somebody who has learned in the area, who knows what the law requires, who knows what the law requires, then the likelihood of you having a valid document and it being done properly is greater.
Thank you very much. Yes? Question? Yes, my friend across here, question, go ahead. Thank you, Tanya, Sister Tanya.
It just appears to me, listening to what you're saying,
Yes.
that, um, you need quite a bit of money to even have a testamentary, um, trust, yes. Cause I'm here thinking, if I am earning minimum wage, I don't have any house, I don't have any land, I have no property. I earn minimum wage, I am paying rent. Um, do I need to make a will?
Yes. Yes, because you could die on the same day that I decide to leave you ten million dollars.
So I'm good.
So you don't know what's gonna happen on that day when you die.
Excuse me?
So therefore, it suits you to have the will, because there's a, in the will, there is the clause called the residuary clause. So if I make that ten million dollar, um, gift to you, and it falls into your estate, then you're, whoever you write the will for will be able to get it. But if you don't have the will, and that ten million goes in there, as Sister Tanya says, it will distribute according to the law.
Alright, so the testamentary, um, trust, do you, because this is something that I gather, if you have like maybe a sum of money, some investment.
No, no, it's not, it's not saying that at all. And that's why I said in the document, and I'm saying all the time, complete the document and take it to an attorney. And let the attorney, this is my recommendation now. Let the attorney advise you as to whether it's a will, a testamentary trust, and we're gonna also talk a little bit about intervivo's trust. I don't try to make those decisions, you know why? Because of the fact that you might see somebody and say, no, you know, I'm anything. And in the meantime, you don't know, like I saw a young man in, at Ligonie Post Office. And he was there standing behind my, my car smoking weed. Now, the worst thing you can ever do is stand behind my car smoking weed, you know, because the gospel just comes out to me, just flows out to me automatically. So don't smoke weed around me if you don't want to hear the gospel. Cause I start to preach same time. So when I was talking to him, I said, so you're such a fine young man, so what's happening? Oh, his mother left him a whole heap of money, and he squandered it. Why you think he squandered it? Cause he got no guidance from the family. Family never had a family meeting to say, okay, when I leave this, I'm gonna leave it in a trust so that you and your succeeding generation have something. Can you imagine Jesus dying and, can you imagine Jesus dying and not selling the Holy Spirit for us? No, no, that's not your business. Your business is to fill out the information in that, in that document, take it to the attorney, and let them make a decision as to whether it's just a simple will you need to do, or if you need to go into a, a testamentary. Cause I don't know who your family is. At the point of death, you just don't know what's gonna happen. So it is better that you go, you fill it out and you do it. Don't start and say, well, I don't have this, I don't have that. Because somebody in your family could die and leave you this, the amount of money, and you, you just don't have the term, to, to, to pass it on to your, to your family. So it's better to do it, yes? Who else is next? Yes?
Um, so what if the two witnesses die before the person?
That's fine. If the two witnesses die, then what happens there against, um, very good question. The gentleman here, if two witnesses die? If two witnesses to the, to the will? Before the testator, testatrix?
So if the, if the witnesses die before the person who makes the will dies, it's not a difficulty, doesn't make the will invalid.
Right.
It will not invalidate the will, the will is still good. So the, it's, it's still valid. What is the purpose of the witness or the witnesses? If there is a difficulty, so let us say I made a will. And in my will, somebody asked the question earlier. In my will, I left something, whatever it is, for, um, probably some far cousin. So I'm married and have children, but I left something, like a property, for some far cousin. And my husband and children, but this woman mad, how she figure leave this property that is valued to whoever, not, not, not. And so the near family, the near family start to question and say, you know, me think say XYZ must, must forge that, that will there? Me not believe so that will there, right, you know? And so the, the validity or the genuineness, that's how, how I put it very simply, of the will comes into question. And so the witnesses know, where there are challenges like that would come in, the witnesses would be important to say, but boy, I was there and saw when Tanya sign it, is not lie, and nobody forged it. We were there, we were standing up there together at the same time when she did sign it. So this document that you have before you, we know it. You see me? You see where I'm going with the witnesses? That point about, um, the challenge, when you have a will, it can be challenged.
Yes.
That point about not providing for whoever. There is a piece of legislation, a piece of law that allows relatives, and it tells you who falls in the different categories, to challenge the will on the basis that you did not make, as the testator, reasonable financial provision for the people who think them should get it. Now hear me good before you go any further. You can't stop a man from challenging something. You can't stop them, we live in a democratic nation. Free will, choice. And hold on. The, 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 the question is, how likely will that challenge, or what's the likelihood of success of the challenge? And so you increase the likelihood, or you reduce the likelihood of, of a successful challenge by ensuring that you do the thing the right way. Are you with me?
It doesn't make it invalid, that's what she's saying. It doesn't make, yes, it doesn't make the will invalid, yes. Can I ask you all to just hold your question, because see the time is going by? One second. The other thing I want to bring up to you is intervivo's trust. Especially when you're getting old like me, you can actually set up a trust where trustees will help to manage your, your assets and so on while you're alive. You can also talk about that. Secret trust, how many of you have heard about secret trust? Secret trust usually happens where, um, can I get your attention, please? Hello? 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 Secret trust usually happens in, in relationships where either party in a marriage or in some relationship have a child or family member who they want to give something to, and they don't want to write it in the will. So I will go to him and say, you know, I have this person I want to give this money to. You'll see it come in the will, it is your name in there, but the money is not for you. It is for XYZ person, yeah? So that's the other thing. Know the legal age for establishing a legal document, and we spoke about that, that's age eighteen. If you have disabled family members, establish a trust for them. And that's why you need to talk to the attorney. Know that state benefits, NIS and NHT are also retirement savings benefits, which provide a benefit in the event of disability, old age and death, and a benefit to, to survivors. Did you know NIS? Did you know NIS does not require a will to claim benefits when somebody dies? But NHT requires a will in place. So if you have your benefits from NHT, and you don't have a will in place, it's going to go into the laws of intestacy. And that is also causing a lot of poverty in Jamaica. Um, know that an employment-related approved retirement savings plan and so on provides for a benefit in event of disability, old age and death. In these plans, you write who you want as your beneficiary, and it's paid out accordingly. It doesn't require a will for those at all. Um, and, and the trustees are there. I'm trying to go on quickly. Quote, "Law is order and good law is good order. Justice is the sum of all moral duty. Where there is no vision, the people perish. But he that keepeth the law, happy is he," Proverbs twenty-nine eighteen. The word law is found in the Bible four hundred and fifty-nine times. There are examples of persons who follow the law, and what was the outcome, and those who didn't follow the law, and what was the outcome. So it's important to know what the law says. List of advisors, this part of the presentation is very short. Um, reading God's word and listening to the Holy Spirit, very important to have that relationship, to just listen to what the Holy Spirit is telling you, very, very important. Don't wait till you get old like me to understand that, right? So you, you know, you can have somebody who has a specialist on state benefits, NIS and NHT. You have your attorney, you have your investments, people who give advice on that. You have life, general and property insurance, pensions and annuity, debt management, income tax act and so on. So in your lifetime, you have these, and at death, you're gonna need them as well. Because rent is Caesar, what is Caesar's, unto God, what is God's, yes?
What if, um, for instance, an individual in the will dies? Where someone, what if someone in the, who is listed in the will dies? No, you die, and the person who should inherit all of that, they die. Is there anything that?
So, so in a situation like that, there's a difference between, I said earlier about common disaster. If you and the beneficiaries die at the same time, then the law is gonna work out. That is why everybody needs to have a will. Yeah? Because if the person who you left in it also died and they didn't have a will, and they didn't get ten billion dollars from your estate, because you look like a ten billion dollar person, then, um, then whoever it is, based on the laws of intestacy, is gonna give it. That's why it's so important to discuss wills in your family, and how to pass on your generational wealth, yes?
So that's a problem I'm having, discussing the will in the family. Based on what does that mean? So I have like five nephews.
Five what?
Nephews, for example.
Yes.
No children of my own.
Yes.
So you know that as aunts, we are going to be closer to some than others. You have your favorite.
Could be close to all of them.
Yeah, your child. But based on maybe a lot of reasons, you might be giving this one more than the other, but it might cause some problem in the family. Right? So I am thinking that if I am going to make a will, and I should make a will, then I don't want any of them to know, but the executor may be for safety reason. That's my thought.
Um, again, apply the principles of equity for your nephews and they or whoever is your descendants, cause they're still your descendants. And if you have a problem, if you know that the, that the person who you are giving the money to are not very good at managing money, that's why the trust is so important.
Well, I'm a teacher, so not money, but property.
Even if you're giving property, because some of them would not imagine, they wouldn't know that they have to pay the property tax. And if they don't pay the property tax after, I think seven years, the government can take back the land. So therefore, it means that, and that's why I said earlier on, what we need to do is to go away for a long weekend and discuss these things with our people. Because if we don't do it, a lot of our wealth is gonna be lost. And we don't want that.
And problem.
And problems, yes.
I'm thinking about equity like this. So I have one who is able to buy houses for himself. And I have this poor one who is really struggling.
It doesn't matter whether he's a trillionaire. One second, it doesn't matter whether the nephew is a trillionaire, billionaire, or, or an heir. Once he is part of a group of children that you want to leave it to, or you're succeeding, you do it in equal shares. It is better to do it that way, regardless of what money they have. Give it to them in equal shares, because it's a lack of equity. I can go outside there, and the sun and the rain falls on there. Just stand there, I rest my case. Always look at the principle of equity. It causes less fighting and quarreling. In the back here, last question in the back here, in the back there. Last question in the back there. Last question.
Uh, in some sectors of Jamaica.
Can we listen, please? Yes?
Even years ago, and so Jamaicans tend to prefer word of mouth to say, this is yours and that is yours. And when I was doing the history for my home church.
Yes.
In about twenty fifteen, I found that the original land that the church was on, the gentleman, the owner was a member of the church.
Yes.
And he gave the church the land.
Yes.
But afterwards, his daughters came and said they want the land for house, and the church can't get it. And so because of that, the church had to go and seek land. So a lot of persons use word of mouth and say so and so, but they don't have any document. And, and many houses and so people who say they leave land to children, and people live on land, no. They are losing the land because there's no document to show that they actually got it.
That's correct.
So that's why I think it's very important to have something written so that the law can recognize it.
Make it plain, and that is why I would also recommend to Sister Barnes and her team in Investment Wives and Trust, try and get an attorney, ask EJC to assign an attorney to your church. Yes? Who can help with getting these things done and communicate on a regular basis. Yes, last, last, last question.
Who should keep the will after it is being written?
Pardon me?
Who should keep the will?
Oh, after you've done it, you have to keep it in a safe place, or you can register the will as well. You can register the will with that thing, the Administrator's Department. Tanya can tell you that. But it's good if you can register the will. Um, and that way, it is sound, and you know where it is. But if you're gonna keep it, you should keep it in a safe place, in a, in a, in a vault or somewhere like that, or if you have a, a bank, a bank, what do you call it again? Safety deposit box, you can leave it there as well. Tanya, you want to make a comment? Last comment? Can we listen? No, the mic is not on.
No, it's not. Alright, um, there was a question, I think.
Can we be quiet, please?
About cost. If I, if I'm remembering correctly, about the cost of doing these things. So for example, making a will if you want to get an attorney. EJC recently started a legal aid clinic, um, which provides free legal advice. So I would encourage you, anybody who needs legal advice, you can't afford to pay for it, to, um, make use of the services. I'm, I'm trying to find the flyer to tell you when it is held. It is held on a particular Sunday each month.
It is the second Sunday.
Okay. Alright, very well. So I want to encourage you to use the services. Because there's no shame in the fact that I can't afford everything. And if I can't afford everything, I go and try and get it either free or at a reduced cost. Yeah? So if you can get it free, and the attorneys, as far as I am aware, who the, the, the conference has, because there's a group of attorneys, um, there are persons who are competent. So I encourage you to make use of it.
Thank you very much. That's a legal aid clinic at EJC. Wrapping up, if you, if any of you lack wisdom, let him ask of God, that give it to all men liberally, and abradeth not, and it shall be given to him, James one five. Without leaps of imagination or dreaming, we lose the excitement of possibilities. Dreaming after all is a form of planning. Estate plan is an important and everlasting gift you can give your family. And setting up a smooth inheritance isn't as hard as you might think. Here's the extra broader. Organize your legal documents into storage facility, files or vault. For your valid generational wealth plan, legal document determine whether or not you should select the administrator general as a trustee. Ensure that your spouse or a family member knows where your document is or are stored. Homework. Look up the meaning of the following words in the Bible and also Google, Google it. Investments. Estate and intestate. Wealth. Trusts, intervivo's, testamentary and secret trusts, we spoke about that. Generational wealth. Inheritance. Question. If you are faced with a life event today, let me go back. If you are faced with a life event today, disability, old age and death, is your document ready for your generational wealth plan as an inheritance? For your succeeding, for your succeeding generations? I'd like to thank you all very much for your attention this afternoon. Take time to enjoy the opportunity which God has given you today to live healthy and manage your investments in order to develop your personal wealth, spiritual, physical and financial, as a foundation for your generational wealth plan. I, where I live right now, next door to me, they're, they're gonna be putting up a nine-story apartment. they're going to be putting up a nine-story apartment complex. Nine, you know? And if you see the amount of preparation that was done with digging the foundation, doing the, digging down into the ground, putting down the foundation. In our lives, we have to do the same thing. When Jesus was leaving, what did he say? When Jesus was leaving this earth, what did he say? He said, "I go to prepare a place for you. And if I go and prepare a place for you, I shall come again." Yes? Preparation is key. We see it in the Bible, we see it everywhere. Today is the time to start to create your vision and prepare your written generational wealth plan, spiritual, personal, financial, as an inheritance for your succeeding generations. Oh, she's gone, the lady was sitting there. Today, I pray that each of us will let God's love lift you to create your vision statement for creating your personal wealth, and to prepare your valid will and/or testamentary trust and/or intervivo trust as an inheritance for your succeeding generations. Thank you again, thank you so much. Thank you.
My father is rich in houses and land, and I know he definitely provided for us, because we have access to all of it. We just have to be obedient. Proverbs 29 verse 18. "Where there is no vision, the people perish; but he that keepeth the law, happy is he." So I am sure this evening, we got a wealth of knowledge. We learned a lot of things that I'm sure we did not know before, so let us use it wisely, plan, and execute it well. Sister Cooper, on behalf of the, please join me here. On behalf of the leadership, the Wills and Trusts Department, and all the members of the Mount Bay Seventh-day Adventist Church, I just want to say thank you for taking the time out of your busy schedule to be here with us. I know it was a rough journey to get here because of our road, and that is why we started so late. We benefited well, and we just want to wish you safe travel home. Thank you, Sister Ralph, for sharing with us also, and for accompanying Sister Cooper. I present to you the small token of our appreciation.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Looking forward to coming back again. But this time, 90% of the church will have their will or testamentary trust in place.
Alright, Sister Davis will come now with her closing hymn. Afterwards, Sister Josephs will do our closing prayer.
Hymn number 216. "When the trumpet of the Lord shall sound, and time shall be no more." Hymn number 216. Please stand with me. When the trumpet of the Lord shall sound, and time shall be no more, and the morning breaks eternal bright and fair. When the saved of rich shall gather to their own beyond the and the roll is call up yonder, I'll be there. When the roll is call up yonder. When the roll is call up yonder. When the roll is call up yonder. When the roll is call up yonder, I'll be there. On that bright and cloudless morning, when the dead in Christ shall rise, and the glory of his resurrection share. When his chosen ones shall gather to their own beyond the skies, and the roll is call up yonder, I'll be there. Oh, when the roll is call up yonder. When the roll is call up yonder. When the roll is call up yonder. When the roll is call up yonder, I'll be there. Now let us labor for the master from the dawn till certain sun. Let us talk about his wondrous love and care. Then when all of life is over, and our work on earth is done, and the roll is call up yonder, I'll be there. When the roll is call up yonder. When the roll is call up yonder. When the roll is call up yonder. When the roll is call up yonder, I'll be there.
Amen, church. I just want to let you know that we have copies of the will form that you can collect here. And those of us who have as a challenge accessing the document that Sister Cooper did, we, access it in online, we have four copies that you can get. The others can share their email and get a copy. I just want to say a special thanks to Sister Arlene Barnes. It is very good when you have an assistant, as I would credit this evening's program to her doing. And brethren, don't you agree with me, it was a very good program? And I really thank Sister Davis for singing. I can understand why Brother Carti wants to put her on his will to sing. And with that note of humor, let us pray. O most righteous and eternal Father, we truly magnify your name. We thank you for today another blessed Sabbath day. As it comes to a close, Lord, we can rejoice from morning until evening because of the food and the bread of life you has given unto us. We thank you for our visitors from Kingston, Lord, who's come to share this very important part of living with us, so that we can make our lives easier as we draw to the close of our days, and even to prepare for the uncertainties. We thank you again for Sister Cooper's ministry, and we ask that you continue to guide and protect her, especially as she goes along the worst roads in the world in St. Thomas. Lord, we thank you for our companion, Sister Ralph. And we know, Lord, that you have always sent the information that we need to your people. It is for us to be obedient and to do them in accordance with your will, because we have seen it in your holy scriptures. To this end, Lord, we magnify your name and thank you, and ask you for journeying mercies for all of us as we go to our home of the world. These are acts through your Son, Jesus Christ, amen. You may be seated.